You feeling all right?
I feel fine. Yeah, my wife's sick, so I didn't want to jeopardize anything. I worked from home today and just being around people, I didn't want to.
Yeah, it's going around right now.
Yeah, she got a fever. It was Sunday night, and Monday she was really sick and took her COVID test and was like right away, popped on. So I was like, I'll stay home, take your medicine, get stuff done as I can.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
But I've had it twice in X name, so I don't think I'm gonna get it, but I don't want to carry it around.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrive today, Tuesday, June, July 9th, I now call the July 9th Committee of a Hold to Order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and law.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Here.
Alderwoman No Triano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Alderwoman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Aquorum is present.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And honestly, I must take a pause, you know, because my mind is hard to be here tonight, and not in my community, as we've, you know, we've had such a tragedy in our community. Ms. Sonia Bancy just recently lost her life, and, you know, it definitely, definitely, definitely hurts to see within our community any loss of life. And we've had quite a bit within the last couple of months, so I do ask for a moment of silence for her, and so we can continue. Thank you. I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you. I would accept a motion for the approval of the June 25th, 2024 Committee Minutes.
No move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, is there a treasurer's report tonight?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. The treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of June beginning balance is $57,219,417. We took in total receipts of $21,535,786. We had total disbursements in the month of June totaling $27,359,576, which left the Corporate Fund balance in the month of June at $51,395,627. The ending general balance includes $13,890,792, which is the June ending balance for the ARPA money. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I've been advised there are no presentations. Does that remain true?
That remains true, Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances or table the remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk?
2024-089, 2824-178, 2024-239.
Any movement on those? Any updates?
All right.
You can continue, Mr. Clerk.
Ordinances for committee consideration, CWLP, 2024-249, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 25-05-17, MCW Spectrologic Tape Library Maintenance, three years with Matrix Systems Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $55,165.73 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-250, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of AutoMox Patch Management Software from Caref Soft Technologies Corporation from an Omnia joint purchase contract in an amount not to exceed $166,992 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Ayes have it.
2024-251, an ordinance approving agreement with Chapman and Cutler LLP in an amount not to exceed $420,000 to serve as the city's independent bond council for the upcoming refunding of the 2015 Senior Lean Electric Revenue Refunding Bonds for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Ayes have it.
2024-252, an ordinance authorizing and approving JP Morgan Securities LLC, Buffalo Securities Incorporated, Ramirez and Company Incorporated, to act as an underwriting team for the 2024 Electric Revenue Refunding Bond financing for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No names? Ayes have it.
2024-253, an ordinance accepts and authorizes the execution of the American Public Power Association's Department of Energy Grant Cooperative Agreement, DECR 0000015 subaward, to facilitate the rapid adoption and deployment of industrial control systems, cybersecurity technologies for distribution of municipal utilities program funding opportunity in the amount of $361,327, a supplemental appropriation of these grant funds to authorize an agreement with the Dragos Incorporated for related services to the internal network security monitoring project in an amount not to exceed $285,580 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Ayes have it.
Public Works, 2024-254, a resolution authorizing execution of a letter of intent between the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois to reconstruct Fifth Street from Ash Street to Spruce Street, MFT Section Number 24-State-00-RS for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-255, an ordinance authorizing execution of annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Robert Joe Reynolds for the property located at 674 and 680 West Camp Sangamo Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion on this matter? Alderman? Seeing no discussion? All in favor for debate?
Aye.
It's been, uh, ayes have it.
2024-256, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 674 and 680 West Camp Sangamo Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move for debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for debate. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-257, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for engineering services for sewer rehabilitation in the Northeast Pilot Area in an amount not to exceed $537,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-258, an ordinance renewing the contracts with E.L. Pruitt Company, Petersburg Plumbing and Excavating LLC, Rayhan Brothers, doing business as Sangamo Construction, and PH Bratton &amp; Sons Incorporated for cave-in repairs for a period of 12 months in the amount not to exceed $1,400,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ayes have it.
General City Business, 2024-259, an ordinance to increase number of Class D liquor licenses by one for El Tapico del Jal Cico Incorporated, doing business as Little Fiesta, located at 1,101 South Ninth Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-260, an ordinance approving Addendum 6 to the agreement with Springfield-Sangamon County Growth Alliance, formerly known as Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, for the period beginning March 1st, 2024, and ending February 28th, 2025, by authorizing additional payment of $250,000 for a total amount not to exceed $1,750,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
I would ask that we move it to debate. I know Ryan said he would be here tonight to answer questions. If anyone, any of our council members have a discussion?
Yeah, I...
Can we?
I apologize.
So you did a motion for debate. You need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Second, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded for the debate agenda. Alderwoman Conley for discussion?
Thank you. Since Ryan's here, if you wouldn't mind. Hey, thanks for coming in. So this looks like a big number. I mean, it is a big number, $1.75 million. And I know you don't have this prepared for tonight, and I forgot to reach out to you before tonight, but if not for today, for also for next week, could we get sort of a summary of, you know, kind of what activities have been done? When people ask me, what does the Growth Alliance do? What sort of projects have you brought to the community, and what projects are you working on to develop?
Sure.
I'd appreciate that. I've had some people ask, and so I just want to make sure we have solid answer to give.
In the past, you might remember, I would send an annual update when our funding ordinance came through.
Yes.
And I have that just about complete. I was not paying attention to the city council agendas the last couple of weeks, and didn't know this was coming on today, the whole tonight. I should be reading those every Thursday or Friday. I didn't.
They're riveting.
What's that?
They're riveting.
Well, I mean, I...
They are riveting.
So I apologize for that. I would have had it to you before tonight.
Okay.
I believe I'll have it to you by Wednesday or Thursday, and then I was gonna come back. I talked to the mayor, come back next Tuesday, and I'm not gonna read the report to you. I'll kind of walk through it real quick, because I'm sure you have a busy night, if that sounds okay?
That would be perfect. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for.
And the 250, $250,000 is the annual contribution, and the bigger numbers consolidate cumulative of all the years. And we appreciate the support, and I'm happy to do that. I'll be sending that to you electronically, and I'll deliver hard copies to the council coordinator's office.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I was looking for.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yep. Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Oh, well, yeah, that kind of...
Okay, sorry.
I appreciate that explanation.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So we'll hear it next week, I guess.
Yeah.
But I still prefer to be on debate. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
You might want to hold, Mr. McCready, Alderwoman No Triano?
Hi. Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to make sure that you include in your report. I know Abby has been talking about working on MacArthur Boulevard, so I would like an update specifically on that, if it's not already in there.
Yeah, we will. That's a project that we're supporting, right? Absolutely. There's some things the Growth Alliance is doing to support. The city is doing way more than any of us are.
Well, yeah, for sure.
But, yeah, there's some things.
Just like coordinating amongst businesses.
We will mention that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chair. And Ryan, could you also include the downtown project? Because I just read an article that you gave a good, a good report on, too, and I kind of want to know what's going on, too, with it on Jefferson and Madison. I just read from Channel 20, I think, where you had talked to them about that, that project, too.
Yeah, Channel 20 reached out to me about the Adirondack project and wanted to know about what businesses are saying for demand for residential units downtown. And so they had asked me about that.
Okay.
And I can, I can work with Director Yezel and make sure we have an update on that Adirondack project. That sounds like the one you're talking about, the housing project on Madison?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can talk with her. I know she's talking to the developers, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Alderman Redpath. So I thought this was an annual, the 250 was the annual payment. Is that what this is about? I didn't know this was a wish list thing, or I had brought my list.
Uh, well, there's still time. The meeting's not until next week.
Believe me, if that's how it's gonna work, I'm bringing the list. Thanks.
Yep.
Uh, thank you. There's no more to speak up. Mr. McCready, I would just finish up. I say, is this, am I correct in saying this is our last payment to the Growth Alliance under the contract?
Well, the contract is an annual contract of $250,000, and so it renews every year about this time. So when the budget passes, if the budget has money in it to pay this, then you start to adopt an ordinance to expend the money. I'm not your legal counsel, but that's how you...
That's right. So we, this is us renewing it for the next year, and then a year from now, we'll be back to do it again if the council chooses. It's on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's how the ordinance raises, year-to-year forever?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
We have to come back every year.
All right.
Yep.
All right, thank you. I would just, just say, echo, you know, with my colleagues, I think you are well abreast, and the Growth Alliance is well abreast of projects that we have supported. We've taken trips to learn more about from Chicago, and that's where I wrap my mind around, especially on that South Grand Corridor.
Sure.
And that's not a wish list, Alderman Redpath. That's something that's in motion, and I would really like to...
Long.
It's long, but this one here is in motion. And, you know, I really would like to see all the tools that the Growth Alliance has to see this through. I really would. It means as much to our community as any project in the city, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, it has been moved and seconded for the debate agenda. There will be a presentation next week on their work. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-261, an ordinance authorizing execution of sales tax rebate agreement with Crowes Mill LLC for water infrastructure installation. Costs will at 1220 Tarana Road.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. I would only ask, Director Fuchs or CWLP, is this a normal situation that we do here?
The only one that I remember doing before was with Motorheads.
That's right. I asked that. I know on 11th and South Grand with some of the work, I know some of the businesses to the north side of the street, for them to do certain type of redevelopment in their section. I know we have to do something with our water lines and running it across the street in that area, something that we spoke on before. I know that business couldn't afford to make that happen.
It's, I guess, for our involvement, really, is not in the, in the sales tax part of it. Our part is just getting paid for the work, essentially. So that's, this agreement, I guess, just for Motorheads and for what would be Crowes Mill, was just basically that sales tax. That would be approved by the administration.
I appreciate you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-262, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed $57,698 to the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point DBA Schmeckel Reserve Interpretive Projects for Route 66 Wayside Exhibits Research and Design for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-263, an ordinance authorizing a second year renewal of contract RFP number CV 22-34 with Sinclair Television of Illinois LLC for the 2024 Summer Digital Marketing Campaign for May 15, 2024 to July 15, 2024, for an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-264, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement and payment in the amount not to exceed $5,000 to Levitan Springfield Music Series Lamps for fiscal year 2025 for the Office of the Mayor.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-265, an ordinance releasing revision rights reportedly reserved in ordinance 269-1I46, Book 414, M. Page 421, and ordinance vacating the east 160 feet of the public alley lying between Mason and Madison Streets, extending from the east line of Ninth Street to the west line of the street, and reserving a certain easement upon the real estate upon which said alley has been located, date November 30th, 1936, for the Office of the Mayor.
Move for consent. I know we have a... Oh, it's not for this one. I'm sorry. Not for this one. I thought we had amendment for this one. So it's been moved for consent. Do I have a second?
You do.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? I will say that anything on these, on the race riot monument, Clerk Lesko, I would like to be a co-sponsor on, and I definitely would encourage my two, all the people who sit next to me of color to join us in supporting this movement. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-266, an ordinance providing the donation of certain real property owned by the City of Springfield, Illinois, related to the 1908 Springfield Race Riots and protection of its archaeological resource. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Amendment Number One, proposed Amendment Number One.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt proposed Amendment Number One, Corporation Counsel.
So all Amendment Number One does is it revises the Exhibit A and Exhibit B that were provided. We updated the plats and, and legal descriptions. We've been working with Hanson Engineering to get all this squared away. This is the, the portion that the city is donating. There are also plats that, that St. John's is in discussion with, and Hanson's prepared those as well, but your, the exhibits provided on the ordinance are just the city's.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded to introduce this amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Right back to the ordinance at hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, for consent.
Second.
As amended.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion on this matter?
I, Chair.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. I just, to be clear, is this any of the property that's involved with the Public Works?
Yes.
So, no. Now, we do have a plat that's prepared, but if you, for that property, but if you look at Exhibit B, you can see the shaded area, and that's the legal description. And right now, our water is not, Public Works is not using that facility, that area. If you look just to the east and north of that, that is what's still being used. But this ordinance does not, does not allow for the donation of that property. That is prepared, and when, when the city's done with that property, another ordinance would need to come before council for that property to be donated.
Okay, thank you. And that, that would be part of the infrastructure work that we're funding with the water rate increase, is that right? To move the Public Works from that location? The water stuff?
That, I think that would be a better question for CWLP. That's my understanding that that's what we're going to do. And yes, that would help fund moving that. I think we're a couple years away from donating that property.
Okay. Well, I would just, and Chair, if I could be added to this, or Clerk be added to this as a co-sponsor, I think it's important for the city to support this memorial in, in all ways possible.
I totally agree, and I would say that, you know, as on, on the west side of the tracks, certainly there was houses that's burned down, so we can only imagine what's on the east side of those tracks. So I think, thank goodness that this did come about. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair.
So it's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, I just, I just would suggest that we all add ourselves. I think it's a wonderful project. Having been involved, having the pleasure of being involved in the centennial celebration and recognition of the race riots back in, it's hard to believe, 2008. This is an important, important event that needs to continually be reminded to all our citizens and those who visit the community. I'd like to be added personally, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. Everyone echo that?
Yes.
All right. Good. Glad everybody's in agreement. All right, it's been moved and seconded for consent. Any further discussion? Seeing no, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-267, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority in the amount of $75,600 from the Municipal Band Expense Budget Line 1411 into the Municipal Band Expense Line 1218 to accommodate the FY 2025 contractual payments for the municipal band for the Office of the Mayor.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-268, an ordinance providing and for authorizing the issuance of general obligation funding and improvement bonds, Series 2024, of the City of Springfield, Sangamon County, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $28 million for the purpose of financing costs of certain capital improvements within the city, equipment purchases, and refunding certain outstanding bonds of the city.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Any discussions? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-269, an ordinance authorizing payment of $50,000 for a total amount not to exceed $50,000 in FY 2025, and $150,000 total to Clark Baird Smith LLP for contractual services of Labor Relations Attorney for the Office of Corporation Counsel.
Move to consent.
Second.
I move to second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-270, an ordinance approving mediation agreement with ICG Illinois LLC for the Office of Corporation Counsel.
Move for consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing no discussion? I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to catch the name of this place. Is this Corporation Counsel? Is this between us and the railroad?
No, this, this is regarding CWLP and the hardship.
I'm not saying, thank you. It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there, seeing no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
2024-271, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Springfield and Local Union 193 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers from August 1st, 2023 through July 31st, 2026, for the audiovisual section of the Communications Department and inspectors for the Building and Zoning Department of the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for consent. I will say, in the matter of discussion, Corporation Counsel, is this, are we not in negotiations? This is a final contract for them, correct?
Right, yeah. This is, this is the product of our negotiations.
So I, you know, I'll probably be a present vote on this, because I've, I've long wanted to see Public Works really get, and this is to our council, to really, really get a better raise and get more. And I can say that the numbers that I see while they're good, I think could be better for that particular department. And every Public Works contract that comes up, if it's something that is under 10%, I'm not gonna vote for it. So that's my spiel. I don't want to vote no, because I do want to see them get a raise, but, you know, they work hard, and I promise to speak up for them when this time comes. So, thank you. It's been moved and seconded for consent. Is there any other discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, now we are to unfinished business. Alderman Williams?
So Corporate Counsel, and it's the Chief, Scarlett, please. I, I'm kind of, this, this situation has me very frustrated. So before I get myself in trouble, I need to understand the law, the law, and also what I'm allowed to do as Alderman. So as you know, we have these vacant Walgreens, these vacant CVSs, and Family Dollar, I mean, just vacant buildings, I guess. So a citizen or a person, unhoused person, homeless, whatever you want to call them, are allowed to just take their bedding and just put it down, and just sleep there and be there in front of that empty building. The law allows it.
Well, I would say, no, that would be trespassing at that, at that property.
So as Alderman, am I allowed to, I won't say move them. I'll say, am I allowed to, to have discussions with them and kind of be, encourage them to not be there since I know they're not the owners and that that place is an empty building? Does the law allow me to?
So I don't think you're vested with any additional powers due to your position as Alderman, except the fact that you know the law? as Alderman, except the fact that you know the law and that you're aware of our ordinances, so, we don't have, I would, you don't have any additional authority to do that.
Okay, so, so if the police were called on me, Chief, in this situation with these people that, that live at these buildings that I know are empty, what do you guys do with me?
So, and just to be clear, it is trespassing, but the victim then is the owner of that building, whether it's Family Dollar still, or whoever owns that building, so we have to work in partnership with the owner of the building when it comes to, you know, making arrests and whatnot, we have a lot of no trespassing agreements with various corporations to try and prevent some of that stuff, so, I would encourage you to call us, we would come out and do our best to encourage you to move along as you're mentioning.
Yeah, well, so, you know, I, okay, so, the thing is, it's not, it's not a good look for any of us, when, you know, I, you know, I just drove here to City Council, and one of the guys I'm having to, actually, it's your ward, this particular guy, was doing this again, and just the sidewalks packed with bags, book bags, this, that, and old grocery cart, you know, the typical stuff that you see surrounding their sleeping area, and it's storming like that, and that just did something to my gut, as, how can we be up here in leadership and allow that to happen when we know it's not right, for one, for two, we know it's not their property and they shouldn't be there, but, in fairness to you guys, we have called you, that's why I'm at the point where I don't call you, I just do this, I won't say confrontation, but we have a discussion at that point, but I know it can get out of hand or get out of control, so I'm just trying to give some guidance on this, because I just think ordinary people wouldn't be allowed to do that, just, oh, there's an empty building, let me go, you know, lay out in front of it and do that, this is happening more and more every day, and I don't know why we as a city, or, I don't know, maybe as a county, why we can't do something about it?
I think the homelessness epidemic and the mental health crisis that this country is facing is growing exponentially every day, and we're experiencing this, obviously, here in our own community, and I think the Police Department walks a tight rope between being a mental health counselor and encouraging someone to get the necessary help that they truly need, that we all see, versus utilizing some sort of force to now remove them, and the last thing I want any of my officers to get involved in is a use of force situation that doesn't look good, simply because we have a person suffering from a mental health crisis right here. Now, we do have our homeless outreach team that works with these individuals, we have Memorial Behavioral Health that rides with us, they're the experts in this matter, and we call upon them quite a bit to try and help us in these situations.
Yeah, so, so obviously, you guys are overwhelmed with it then, because these, these three spots, I'm thinking right now in my head, have just been there, and then the neighborhood or the citizens call in, they think Alderman, or Mayor, or somebody from the city can fix this, and this is why I make these kind of conversations public, for those who are listening, the advice you're telling me is that I should not try to move them or do anything, but call you.
I would certainly not recommend, that's correct, I would not recommend any civilian to try and take action in their own hands, as that could certainly lead to a physical confrontation, as you mentioned, I don't want to see anyone get hurt.
But then when you don't do nothing, or can't do nothing, or whatever, what do we tell the citizens? You know, because to them, they still see this situation, you know, this person doing inappropriate sleeping in front of an empty building, and I, there's got to be an answer, guys, that's all I'm saying, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not putting, because I see all of us trying to fix it, I've worked with Newman, I've done things, but I see it growing, and that concerns me, it's growing.
I don't have an answer for homelessness, I don't, I don't, I don't think any of us do, and the person that finds the answers is going to solve a lot of, a lot of problems in our country, but I don't have it, and I would tell you, we have resources that we utilize daily, and there are a lot of people that, that need help, whether it's homelessness, mental health, I get that, and I would encourage citizens to call law enforcement, let us do our best to handle these situations, we work with the owners to try and get no trespassing agreements, keep in mind, if we arrest someone for no trespass, that's not even a physical arrest, that's a piece of paper, according to the Safety Act of the state of Illinois, so they get a piece of paper, so that's, that's, that's what my men and women have to deal with right now.
Okay, so, so my final question, I appreciate you, Chief, I knew half of what I asked, but, but I needed to make sure others, here it is, the corporations, the Walgreens, the CVSs and Family Dollars, so, they, once they close, they have no responsibility after that? Even though the building's still there, they may have removed their name and everything, they have no obligation or responsibility for the property?
They, they still need to follow our ordinances, and we cite them for being vacant, but in the context of homelessness, if, if they don't, as Chief said, they're the victim, but if they want to leave a property and not make a report, and not complain about it, then we can't force them to, to protect their property or to prevent trespassing on, on their property or to seek that remedy.
Great.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Alderman Purchase?
Chief Scarlet. Before you go ahead and get to the side, how many citations do you just keep handing those out over and over, because like, just a prime example, you have KFC and our officers do a good job, when I do send you a picture or show you that this building is vacant, the grass is real tall, so people are using that as an area to go hide out, case in point, candy corner to the bread line, it's a white vacant building right there next to the parking lot, is, the grass is back as tall as me, and they building their little tents right there in the corner, and so I've reported it to my zoning manager, he has said something too as well, and you guys go out, but then, how many citations can you give them if they just know it's a piece of paper and they can't get in trouble?
Well, there's, what's the word I want to say, exceptions within the law to where if they're issued a citation and they no longer choose to move, that we can take, there is additional action that we can take, and again, I would tell you, that involves taking someone to the county jail, where they go in the front door and go out the back door, so.
I agree with you, that's a lot of frustration, the second thing I wanted to bring up, as you know, I'm definitely supportive of law enforcement, and people, a lot of people tune in and watch us on City Council, well, we were out in the park this past weekend, and a family approached us, and they showed us a video of our officers and having the young lady in handcuffs there coming to speak in front of us at City Council, we encouraged them to reach out to you, we encouraged them to talk to you all first before they come in and expose everything, but when you used that word excessive force, it just sparked a light bulb in my head, because the video I seen, there was just a lot of aggression, and, you know, it's a female, and she's tinier than me, so it's not a lot she can do when we got excessive force going on, so just encouraging our officers to, you know, try to de-escalate situations, and we've been outside at nighttime where we've seen it and seen our officers engage with the community, and they've, like, settled down and walked away, and I know sometimes that's not always the case, but we did encourage her to reach out to you all and put in a report or something to look at it.
Absolutely, first and foremost, I would say if there's ever a situation where someone believes that excessive force was used, that we have an Internal Affairs process, that I would encourage them to utilize, and that could go directly through me if they choose to do that, and I will start that process.
Well, they pick with me, because they know I talk to you, so they'd be like, call your friend, Chief Scarlet.
Yeah, now, so, by all means, pass them on, number two, I would say that I routinely inform my officers that, and I just mentioned this in the squad meeting at 5 o'clock, that the best tool that we have is our mouth, and that our mouth can, and this goes for anybody, right, device I give my kids, our mouth can get us in trouble, or our mouth can get us out of trouble, so why not utilize that to, to our best possibility to help de-escalate situations, and again, there are cases where force is necessary, and sometimes people don't see all the reasons why the force has happened, and ultimately, that's one of the reasons we have body cams, and those certainly help in those situations, but.
And we mentioned that, Chief Scarlet, because I just think the community is upset with what just took place, and so now, you have some people saying, well, should we call the police, we don't want to get shot in the head, should we call, like, it's just a lot going on, so when we're talking about approaching some people in our communities, I just think we always look good, we have body cams on our uniforms for it to, to show us what happened as well.
Let me just say this, that's a tragic set of circumstances, and I don't have the details, but my heart breaks for everyone involved in that, and I can certainly speak for the Springfield Police Department and the fact that I believe we're a professional organization, one of the highly trained organizations, equipment is state-of-the-art, top-notch, we have less lethal options, we have body cams, and we work tirelessly every day to ensure that stuff like that doesn't happen in our community.
Thank you. I got one more follow-up, but if you wanted to comment, you can.
No, I, I'll wait, ladies first, ladies first.
Mine's is for Public Works, but if you wanted to comment.
Let me ask Alderman, NoTron, do you have something for Chief Scarlet?
It's not, no.
So let me go with Alderman, NoTron, I'll come back with you.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no, I got a follow-up for Director Fuchs after.
I know, so that's why I say Alderman, NoTron.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, I had emailed CWLP Doug about an update on the carbon capture project in light of our ribbon cutting, unfortunately, I was not able to be there, so I wanted to see if he was available to give us the update now?
I can't.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so last month, we did, well, U of I had scheduled a ribbon cutting, where they had Department of Energy and legislators, you know, come to the site and do their, I guess, you know, the ribbon cutting for the large-scale pilot project that we have for carbon capture, it started, let's see here, probably back in 2019 or 18 maybe, dealing with University of Illinois, the Prairie Research Institute, Kevin O'Brien's been here a few times, you know, talking, but it's been a couple of years, I think, really, but it's just been taking that long to go through the process of the grants, it's an $80 million project, with the Department of Energy and the state of Illinois have, you know, provided funds for the project, as well as Lindy and BASF are two of the companies that are involved with this, are the partners, and, so, basically, the construction should be complete this fall, and then the project will continue for about two years, roughly, where they're going to prove the economics of the Lindy's and BASF's technology that they have to remove carbon from that facility, and then they'll release that information, you know, as a report, essentially, you know, where it's at, and that would lead to whether, you know, we can do something full-scale maybe in the future, I mean, that's a different, different area, as far as, you know, grants being available and the tax incentives involved, that's, that's, that's a different hurdle, so this is, this project's a small scale, they're just taking a small percentage of the stream of gas to prove they can carb, you know, pull the, the carbon out of it, and they release it right back up the stack, that's part of the DOE's guidelines, is that there is really nothing you can do as an additional step onto this project to, you know, do something with the carbon, so, because the purpose of it is, for the DOE, is to just test that technology, that's their reason to do it, and there is no cost that's incurred by us, you know, as, for our customers, for the utility, we made sure that that was all a part of the grant process to be covered, so, like for electricity use, steam use, that kinds of things.
Okay, so, when you say construction will be done in the fall, then it's going to be operational, like, actually?
Yeah, they'll start, then they'll start the testing process, and I don't really know exactly how long that takes, I mean, that could take a month, it could take two months, so, but it'll, it'll be, it'll be in the process of the, of testing all those things, and then they'll, you know, start the full operation and...
Okay, yeah, it would be great to hear about that once it gets started, and thank you so much for addressing where the carbon's going to go, that's going to be, it, it's not going to be, it is a big concern of mine and my constituents, so it's good to hear that, well, I mean, I guess it's not good to hear, but, it's, it's good to hear it's not going underground in Springfield.
Oh, no, no.
So, thank you, that was it.
Alderman Purchase, you just had a follow-up question?
Yes, for, well, I, I don't know who this is addressed to, but I received some information about my ward, and I think it might fall in some of my colleagues' wards, ZIP Code 04, and that Habitat for Humanity will not be providing services anymore in those areas to pick up couches, and I just wanted to get some clarification to say, are they wrong, or did we, and they received a notice, too?
This is the first I'm hearing about it, so.
Okay, I didn't know who it would go to.
I will defer to Director Fuchs if, if he knows.
We had a meeting with Habitat for Humanity yesterday, they're making a change in their leadership, they're getting a new executive director, so we thought we'd meet with the outgoing director and the incoming director, we reviewed the contract, and they can do the large item pickup, what it's generally referred to, to any address that pays the waste and recycling fee.
Okay, so then, people who don't have trash service could not call?
You, you can call Habitat for Humanity to come and make a pickup if you are donating items, but if you do not pay the waste and recycling fee, it is not covered by our contract.
Okay, that, thank you for that clarification, and is it only in that ZIP Code, though? Why was it that ZIP Code brought up?
I have no idea why somebody was limiting that.
Okay.
But we had a good conversation and reviewed the contract, and everyone left fully knowledgeable.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, I just want to follow up on that, so, that, that fee is an automatic charge that goes on CWLP, but it's not charged to the multi-unit apartments.
No, ma'am, it is not.
So that's, so essentially, I mean, maybe that was the, the concern, because I have 04 in my, in my ward, too, and I haven't heard from anyone that they got a letter from Habitat, so maybe were they in a multi-unit living?
Yeah, they just sent the letter and showed it to me, and I think just clarification is what I think was needed to understand, because I didn't know anything about it, so I was like, well, I could ask Director Fuchs.
Yeah, that's, because that would be concerning, and I will say, just as a follow-up, so I was, I've been told recently, and Director, you can probably clarify this, that there is no diversion, no landfill diversion through Habitat's program, so everything that they pick up through bulky item goes landfill?
I believe so.
That's correct, okay.
They do, as I said, if you, if you are donating, they do pick up, it's one of their other businesses to rehab furniture for resale.
And I think people don't always understand that those are two separate kind of services that they offer, because I had someone reach out to me who just had said, you know, I just assumed that, you know, I've got some carpet remnant and some chairs, and I put them all out, and they assumed that everything would be, you know, some goes to the landfill, some gets diverted and goes back to their resale, but that's not actually the case, so if people want to have something diverted from the landfill, they consider it, you know, bulky item, it's a table, a chair, or something you're not going to use anymore, they should actually not use our bulky item collection, they should do that as a donation instead.
Right.
Okay, thank you, because that was, I didn't actually realize there was that distinction quite that clear also, so it was, it was good to know that.
And they make a lot of pickups with both.
They make a lot of pickups for both, yes, thank you, thank you, Chair.
No problem. Alderman, NoTron?
Thank you, Chair, oh, one other question, so, do you know if it's through the same link, like web app, and you just make a selection, like donate versus?
Personally, I don't, but if you were to call Christina, I'm sure she could explain it.
Okay, sure, and, so, if we have folks living in apartment buildings, and they have big items to get rid of, what, what do they do?
That's up to them and management of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director, before you leave, I, you know, the lady who bumped into me, she definitely showed me a letter that stated, she lives in a residence, that stated that they didn't pick up N62704 in that area anymore, and I forwarded on to, to those who pick up that area code, but surely, they, they definitely are communicating that with residents, I did see it, now, I will make sure that gets forwarded to, to everyone, so we can look at that and analyze it, but I will say, you know, it, it concerns me, not, not that we, we shouldn't continue, but I think we need to be clear, because in, in my community, right, I'm telling people, make sure we're calling Habitat for Humanity to pick up large, we're trying to help with flydop, and we're pressing this out, and some of the stuff that they're putting out there is gross, you know, it's mattresses, it might sit out there overnight until they come pick it up in the morning, and are not things that, that they can donate at all, so, so people are utilizing that, that service for those things, and that's what we want them to do, correct, with, with those things?
Sure, I, I would suggest that if you have any questions, certainly reach out to Habitat for Humanity, I found them to be very... Sure. I, I would suggest that if you have any questions, certainly, uh, reach out to Habitat for Humanity. I found them to very, be very open and available. And if you have any questions at all, if you would, uh, reach out to Christina of our staff, I'm sure she could, uh, make it clear.
All right. Well, stay close. Let me finish up. Anybody else got anything? All right.
I'm sorry, Chair. I just want to add, now that the, the county has a similar agreement with, with Habitat now.
Yes, they do.
There really shouldn't be as many gaps in coverage as there used to be. I mean, that was.
They mentioned their, their program with the county. They're, they're all over the county now.
Yeah, so that, I, if you could please forward that, um, I'm, I'm in oh four. I, I didn't get that letter, but I would be very interested to see that.
I only got oh three. So, yeah, it was surprising to me, but, um, absolutely, we'll, we'll have to figure that out. Um, but my next topic, um, is, is, do you know what, and, and, you know, we've talked about signs before that's been removed throughout the city and we've recovered them. But do you know what has happened to the Black Lives Matter signs downtown on Fourth and Fifth of Jackson?
If you would indulge me, I would like to review the policy with an example, and I think it'll, it'll explain what happened. In Public Works, uh, there are, there are people who ask for memorials, if you will, of individuals by, uh, naming a street. We refer to them as temporary honorary street signs.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a lot of them, but we do get them. Generally, it's someone who has passed and their family wants to honor them on a street that was, uh, large in their life. The policy is such that an application is filled out with Public Works. Uh, there is a fee involved and a resolution is passed by this body. Good example, uh, is, uh, Len Trumper. Uh, we all know him as the famous producer here in, uh, in Springfield. Uh, we received an application from his family over a year ago to name Second Street between Monroe and Adams, Len Trumper Way. Uh, they filled the form out and, and there's a, there's a, a little bit of, uh, we want to know who folks are. We certainly wouldn't want to put a, a street sign of anybody who was notorious or had, uh, caused a, a, a problem. So, uh, it's, uh, so we can, we can find out who the individual that's being honored is. Uh, then, uh, resolution is introduced here in its best. I actually, uh, have the resolution for Len Trumper right here. Uh, the very last line is, uh, after it is placed, uh, that following the year-long honorary designation of Len Trumper Way, the signs will be presented to the family of Len Trumper. And that's generally the way it's done. This passed about a year ago and, uh, we keep track. We like to keep the, uh, signposts clean. We don't like to have, uh, these signs staying too long because there is, uh, uh, an issue with Central Dispatch. When, uh, emergency services are called for, uh, somebody's in an accident, somebody's been hurt. They call dispatch, where are you at? And they look up and they say, I'm on Len Trumper Way. Well, despite, dispatch doesn't keep track of the streets by temporary honorary signs. They keep it by the, the street number. So we like to keep that clean. And at the end of the year that it's allowed, we collect those. As I said, most of these are for individuals who have passed. And since they have filled out the form and we have the resolution, we're able to make sure that those go to, uh, their families. The first week of this year, uh, Mr. Trumper's time, uh, was up as a, as a street sign. So our work order was cut to gather the temporary honorary, honorary street signs. And the crew, uh, that was in the third of June, uh, since the order said to pick up the temporary honorary street signs, they picked up the ones on Monroe and they picked up the ones in the four hundred block of, uh, Jackson Street, uh, the one, the signs that I believe you're referring to. So that, that's how that happened.
So when, when did we take that sign down?
The third of June.
The third of June, okay.
This year.
So it's been, it's been down for some time. So it's been up since twenty twenty-one.
I believe that's it, yes.
George Floyd was murdered in, in twenty twenty. We, we, we passed that resolution, anti-res, racism resolution, um, with several measures in that and followed up with some action in twenty twenty-one. So that sign has been up, um, in an area where people cannot drive and, and things of that nature in front of the governor's mansion. And, um, I knew you would indulge me for a little bit. So I, I apologize for, um, responding to you this way, but, um, it's a very special sign. And for this city, um, that particular group and, 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 um, really, really, really sparked a special, um, conversation for this city that, that, that really moved us forward a little bit. Um, and, and to see it come down, you know, and, and, and be notified, um, from it, from, from the community. You know, it re, it really hurt, um, because it made, it made us feel, people of color, black people, feel like our lives don't matter. That's why it was put up there. That's why it was left up there knowing these rules. Like, you know, w- w- when I prepare, I'm an old coach, I prepare offense and defense. And, you know, I wasn't going to say something about this. I was just gonna, um, say it, but, but I know I've said something before, so I, obviously you're prepared for that. So I knew that, that would be the response. And I appreciate you for it, um, Director Fuchs. And I would just ask that Corporation Council, please draft me another resolution to put the sign back up. Please, and thank you. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Oh, up, I'm sorry. We got citizens to speak, don't we, Miss Alice?
A good try.
Uh, Alice Ramey. Holy cow. Donald Hennerhan. Colby Huth.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that signed up.
Let's do adjourn.
Second. Any, and there, there's a gentleman in the, in, in the, in the crowd, excuse me. There's a gentleman in the crowd that notified me that he wants to speak. And, um, Mr. Hampton, come on up. Please, please state your name for the, for the record.
My name is Ardell Hampton. Uh, I, uh, excuse me. I had spoke with Sean earlier today. I got some serious concerns with you guys as police force. Uh, I don't know if I should call them officers, should I call them the Goon Squad? Yeah, but yesterday, at the ninth and enterprise, my son has been harassed by this vice squad you guys have that y'all put together. The video is very disturbing to me as a parent because I tell my kids whether they're right or wrong. And I tell them when a police officer pull you over, you give them your driver's license, your registration and insurance. But my son was approached by you guys' team that you put together. And I'mma call them the vice squad because they ripped him out the car. Well, they didn't rip him out the car. He got out the car, dropped his keys and was jumped by you guys as police officers. No parent reason. He didn't do nothing. He a college student, Quincy University, Jackson, Mississippi. But my concern and my disturbance all night long and my wife, he's at the hospital, my wife is still at the hospital with him, is that you guys, that we have these guys to protect us. But these guys are jumping on us. And it's not just, it's these young, they, they jumping on all these young black men. All because of tint on your car window. That's no excuse. You want to search your car because they got dark tint on their windows. The city of Springfield police officers got tint on their windows. And I'm quite sure some of their personal cars have tint on them. And I'm quite sure some of you guys go buy these cars with tint already on them. But these young black men are being pulled over by this vice squad that you have put together. And I think something needs to be done because I'm very disturbed by the video. Yes, I have the video. Yes, my wife have been waiting on a call from the lieutenant. We haven't received not one call from Internal Affairs. We not have received no call from the lieutenant. And it's not, I'm sorry that I feel this way. But, um, my son cried last night and he said, Dad, I can't go nowhere without being pulled over by the same officer that keeps harassing him. And I think we need to put a stop to it because this is sad. But we sit here and we're looking for solutions, how to solve a problem. But the same ones that we call to protect us are the same ones that's whooping us. If I whip my child, I go to jail. But if the police beat the hell out my child, he gets to high five his buddy and drag my son to jail and trump him with charges. Is it fair? I'mma tell you this, my kids ain't perfect. And I ain't perfect. But I can tell you one thing, I'm a damn good daddy because when they're wrong, I tell them they're wrong. But I'm not going to sit there and watch someone kill my child. We have watched it over and over. And I think we need to put a stop to it. I like the chief. I think the chief is a fine man. Every officer on the force is not bad people. But I think y'all got some rotten apples in there that y'all need to weave out. And I'm sorry, I, I'm here for this, guys. I'm sorry. Please forgive me. But I, this is how I feel today. I took off work early today just to be here so you guys can hear me. Because the next time it may not be, I may not be able to stand here because my son may get killed. And all I'm asking you guys to do is please fix it. Get with this squad or this team and please fix it. I'm asking the chief, chief, please fix it. Because this is sad. But we all supposed to come together and be one. Quit jumping out the car. If you're going to jump out the car, jump out the car and give them something positive to talk about. Jump out the car to introduce yourself to these young kids. Let's be able to work in the community with these kids. I'm willing to stand with the police officer and go work with these kids. Have I been perfect all my life? Absolutely not, no. Because if I was, I wouldn't be standing here.
Ardell, um, Audubon Williams.
Yeah, my, my comments, if, if Chief can come up, please. So now, you know, the, the, it's out there. I mean, there, there's been obviously numerous stops. Um, I was stopped by, um, I was stopped by citizens. So, you know, they said, well, all the men, you, you, your car's tinted. I said, well, this is a twenty twenty-four. Yeah, I got a new car. It is tinted. I think purchases is tinted. We all got tinted. So the, my, 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 what their whole point was to stop me is, well, so why ain't the police stopping you? Is, is what I'm asked. And I'm like, well, I don't know. I brought mine from the dealership like this, you know. So it, it, are they stopping cars that are purposely doing it or if it comes already tinted? Wha- what is the confusion at with this tint?
So Illinois law dictates a certain level that your car can be tinted to. And I don't have all the, I'm not going to speak educated to that. But there's a number, uh, that the Illinois law identifies is if, uh, your vehi, your tint on your veh- vehicle lets less light in, it would have a lower number. And so the number is, I believe, thirty, if I'm correct.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And so it is, um, there isn't a such thing as a legal tint as far as how dark it is tinted. Now, how the vehicles come off the factory, I'm going to sit here and tell you, I don't know the answer to that. I would hope they're not selling cars.
So it's based on the level of tint that makes you get stopped. So, so my second question, so we did have, uh, an activity where, uh, we were doing this like over the last week or so, uh, like as, uh, uh, intentional, let's look at all these tinted vehicles in Springfield or?
There's certainly a reason for a traffic stop. It's a primary violation.
What I'm asking you was this aside from regular traffic, this is going to be what we do these three nights. We're going to go look for tinted. Because it seems like it was numerous stops. Uh, I think I was with the all the men on a few of them. We passed and it was about tint. So I'm at, so the group decided we're going to do tint looking tonight, that type of thing.
In response to some of the block party situation that we've had, I've asked for zero tolerance traffic stops. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean people get citations, but yes, we utilize every violation of the Illinois Vehicle Code to make traffic stops. That's correct.
Well, I'm, so I, I appreciate the clarity. At least now I'm understanding it ain't exaggerated that, you know. But, but it's out in the atmosphere, chief, you know.
Sure.
Uh, and then there are some people that feel exactly like this gentleman, that it's okay to, to, to do the tint stop and, you know, do your job. But it's with this aggressiveness. Is that intentional? Is that a style or, or requirement for this particular type of unit of officers?
No, and I, as I previously stated earlier, it's about de-escalation is what I encourage with.
Well, I know you do that.
Me and Ardell are going to have a conversation so I can get to the bottom of this specific incident because I'm not familiar with it. And again, if there are situations like this, either I need to know about it and, and I don't know whether you said you reached out to Internal Affairs. We'll get to the bottom of that and we'll figure that out, why that call didn't happen. But I'm hearing about it now and we'll get.
I'm glad you two are talking about it and, and, and are going to get to the bottom of it. I know I experienced it with them. I, I actually think they were trying to be funny when they called herself, pulled me over to get on me about having tinted windows. But it did, was to my surprise, as I started driving, I, I started seeing the lights. Then when I picked up Sean on one, even, again, I saw, so I said, maybe they're having a, uh, like a three or four day activity, you know, with this particular unit. That's why I asked, you know, was it intentional? Or for this intentional time to do this? You, you told me about the pop parties, which took me back to some things I've seen. So I clearly see the clarity. I'll just say, I hope we're not being over aggressive, you know. And I hope we can, uh, talk to your side, both side, you know, so that it doesn't escalate.
Well, and I would say this, you know, I mean, we, we need to do our best as a law enforcement agency to keep our citizens safe. And I know one of the biggest issues we've had is the pop-up parties and whatnot in our communities. And so we've utilized every avenue we can, um, a lot of which the council has given us latitude as far as towing and fining and all that to address some of this stuff. And, and obviously it was a busy weekend with the Fourth of July and, and our goal was to, um, you know, do our best to ensure that we didn't have any nefarious activity. Now, it doesn't mean that my men and women have the permission to go yank someone out of the car. And if that happens, I'm going to address that and deal with that for sure.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
So, thank you. I see no discussion. I'll finish up. Ardell. Um, Ardell, talk with Chief. I, as I told you, there's a process and they'll help you through it. Um, I, you know, I'll, I'll just finish up on, on this topic. I think that, um, and, and me and Chief has talked, um, you know, um, I'm, I've been one that stopped for tinted windows and, 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 and this, 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 um, this topic. But, but I will say that, um, I echo Audubon Williams' thoughts that, that it is very, very aggressive in our community right now. And, um, I'm just worried that, that it's too aggressive. Um, you know, and, and, you know, so for us as, you know, legislators, people who work with laws, you know, um, I'm not a fan of what's called pretextual stops. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of us just using any and everything to pull people over. Um, I understand what our jump out boys, our gang unit is, is trying to do, um, within communities like mine. But there's got to be a way to do it. And, you know, driving down the street, doing U-turns on any and every car that has tinted windows or, um, no front plate and, and, and things of that nature. I mean, there's, there's, there's legislation trying to be drafted at the State House right now to take away some of that. And I'm going to be supporting some, some of that and, and trying to add, um, this tinted window thing in because everybody, everybody in our community has some form of tint, eighty, ninety percent, and throughout this city. And, and, you know, when we get this numbers every year from the state police, I say something every year about it, about the stops. Man, three times. And these are some of the reasons for it. So, so, you know, for, for every car that we stop, for, for one of these pretextual stops, fine. But when you get innocent people involved in it, then it further hurts our community and police relations. So, um, we, we got to continue to work on this and, and figure out how we're going to best to do community policing. So with that, last comment, Audubon, Audubon Purchase.
Thank you. Um, Chief Scarlett, you guys do a good job on social media. Can we put out some type of education? Because obviously it's common sense. People should know about it. But I think it's still good to talk about the tents since it's really coming up a lot. Um, if they could just talk about what level it is and put something out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll take a motion for adjournment.